Buenos and hafa de, everybody. Thank you for joining us this afternoon. It is Tuesday, November 25th, 2025. This afternoon's confirmation hearing is held by the Committee on Transportation, Tourism, Customs, Utilities, Federal and Foreign Affairs is hereby called to order. It is now exactly 2:00 P. M. Before I begin, allow me to go over a few housekeeping matters here. Public notice for this hearing was duly disseminated in accordance with the open government law. The first notice was sent on November 18th, 2025, with its second notice on November 21st, 2025. These notices were made available to all senators, local media outlets, the Guam Legislature's website, our legislative calendar, and the Governor of Guam Public Notice Portal. Our agenda for this afternoon is to discuss the appointment, of course, of the Honorable Former Senator Doris Flores-Brooks to serve as the Commissioner as a Certified Public Accountant Representative for the Public Utilities Commission. Welcome my colleagues, but I'm the only one here today. So, as they, as they, as they walk in and sit down, I would welcome them. Before I get, I'd say like to remind the attendees here this afternoon of the Institute of Guam's General Rules of Conduct. I want to welcome, of course, the Vice Speaker, a member of this committee as well. Thank you, Vice Speaker, for joining us, joining us this afternoon. Individual wishing to testify must first be recognized by the Chair and shall state their full name for the record. Testimony and discussion must remain germane to the subject matter of this hearing. Personal attacks or inferences about the character or motives of any senator or individual testifying are strictly prohibited. In accordance with Section 11.07 of the Standing Rules of 38th Guam Legislature, the Chair may order the removal of any individual or senator failing to maintain decorum. With that, we'll now consider, of course, the appointment of the distinguished daughter of Guam, the Honorable Doris Flores-Brooks. It's my honor again to welcome you this afternoon. I look forward to hearing today's testimonies, and you're already here. So, we'll begin with, do I have the sign-in sheet, please? Staff, could I have the sign-in sheet? Okay, we have, anybody that's testifying, both, yeah, please, please, yes, come forward. And we'll start off with, Joe, are you testifying as well? No, okay, anybody else? Okay, we'll go ahead and start with Madam Marine. Yes, go ahead and say it's your name, and yeah, all that, please, thank you.
Good afternoon, Chairman Luhan and Committee Member. My name is Mary Ann Wallace-Chuck, and I am testifying today to express my wholehearted and unequivocal support for the appointment of Ms. Doris Flores-Brooks to the Public Utilities Commission as the Certified Public Accountant Representative. I am a Guam lawyer, a longtime GovGuam employee, a former Assistant AG in the Office of the Attorney General, and currently Legal Counsel for the Guam Power Authority. I have known Ms. Brooks for well over 20 years, beginning when I first came to Guam to work at the AG's office. The AG assigned me to represent the Guam Board of Accountancy, and Ms. Brooks was a member of the board. Ms. Brooks is an accomplished CPA who has dedicated her life to public service for as long as I have known her. As public auditor, she oversaw extensive investigations into the workings of all the GovGuam agencies. She exposed waste, fraud, abuse, and improper financial practices. By promoting transparency and accountability in the use of public resources, her work directly served the interests of taxpayers. As a member of the Guam Board of Accountancy, Ms. Brooks worked tirelessly to protect the public by ensuring that licensed CPAs on Guam adhered to the standards of competence and ethics required in the accounting profession. Now, as a PUC Commissioner, Ms. Brooks's background and skills are benefiting the ratepayers. Her expertise in financial matters enables her to ask pertinent questions and interrogate relevant issues in a way no other member of the Commission can match. I began attending the monthly meetings of the PUC two years ago when I joined GPA, and I can attest that Ms. Brooks is thoroughly prepared for every petition presented by my agency. Her frank and intelligent questions uncover the issues associated with each of our projects. Even if she sometimes puts us on what feels like the hot seat, her questions allow the PUC to make wise and informed decisions that best serve the needs and interests of Guam's ratepayers. I strongly recommend that Ms. Brooks be appointed as the CPA representative to the Public Utilities Commission. I know Ms. Brooks will be an outstanding addition to the PUC because she already is, and I know she will contribute significantly to the PUC's important mission because she already does. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel, thank you. Dr. Johnson.
Thank you, Mary Ann.
Dr. Johnson, yes?
Hello.
Go ahead and identify yourself as well.
I am Dr. Jeff Johnson. I am the Chairman of the Public Utilities Commission, and I'm submitting this testimony in support of the reappointment of Doris Flores-Brooks as a Commissioner of the Guam Public Utilities Commission. Mrs. Brooks has served as a Commissioner since 2019. She has now been reappointed by the Governor to serve for a second six-year term. She currently fills the Commissioner position for the Certified Public Accountant. Mrs. Brooks's background experience as a Certified Public Accountant, Senator in the Guam Legislature, and the Guam Public Auditor for many years, has served her well as a PUC Commissioner. Even prior to her term as a PUC Commissioner, she possessed extensive knowledge concerning the public utilities that the PUC regulates, and familiarity with financial issues affecting those utilities. As a public auditor, she conducted numerous audits concerning the water, power, and solid waste utilities. During her six years as a Commissioner for the PUC, Mrs. Brooks has conscientiously performed her duties. She is always well-prepared for PUC meetings. She carefully reviews the docket materials which are to be considered at each meeting. During PUC meetings, Mrs. Brooks has consistently requested that utility managers justify their actions that they propose to take. Mrs. Brooks has addressed a broad range of matters, including utility rate increases, bond issuances, procurements, and contract awards, and the propriety of expenditures of public funds. Mrs. Brooks has the knowledge and ability to analyze the financial matters that come before the Public Utilities Commission. As an additional role, Commissioner Brooks has assisted, assisted the PUC staff in updating the PUC's own accounting and financial records, and has helped to assure that the PUC accounts and balances are accurate. She provides quarterly reports on the PUC financial condition to the Commission. She has improved the PUC's accounting procedures and record-keeping. I urge that the members of this committee and the Guam Legislature support the reappointment of Mrs. Doris Flores-Brooks as a Commissioner of the Guam Public Utilities Commission. Her service as a Commissioner will continue to be of great benefit to the PUC and the ratepayers of Guam. Thank you for your consideration of this testimony.
Thank you, Dr. Johnson. Senator Brooks.
Thank you, sorry. Hafa de and happy Thanksgiving, Chairman Jesse Luhan. And Vice Speaker Tony Adah, thank you for coming here also. I am Doris Flores-Brooks, the, who has been reappointed, and I'll read my testimony. Hava de Chairman Luhan and Senators of the Committee. I express my sincere gratitude and appreciation to Governor Lou Leong-Garrel for reappointing me to a second term as Commissioner of the Guam Public Utilities Commission. And Senator Luhan, Chairman, I want to also thank you for having such an expeditious hearing so soon, so I really appreciate that also. These past six years have been a tremendous learning experience for me. I have been fortunate to work with a dedicated and devoted group of Commissioners who have served the Commission for many terms longer than I, and I'd like to recognize also another fellow Commissioner who's with me, Mr. McDonald, who I think is the longest servant, followed then by our Chairman, who's the second-longest serving on the Commission. In addition to the Commissioners who've been around much longer than I have, we also have administrative law judges and legal counsel, Fred Horecki, Anthony Camacho, and, and Joe Fed Alcantara, who has, who have been outstanding and accordingly have made my role much easier. And then another person I'd like to recognize is our longtime Administrator, Lourdes Luhan. She has been also on the Commission as, serving as Administrator now for over 20-plus years. My background as a Certified Public Accountant and Guam Public Auditor have also helped me to understand the financial matters involving PUC regulatory and supervision over the utilities. During my six years as Commissioner, I have participated in utility rate proceedings for the Guam Waterworks Authority and the Guam Solid Waste Authority. For example, for GWA, last year, we recently approved the five-year financial plane, plan establishing the proposed rates for the next five years. That's also in the spirit of openness and transparency. And, and the first year of the rate actually went down by, by about two percentage points, I think from 11% to 8%, yes. So, it can go up or down depending, but this first year of the five-year plan actually went down than what we had initially approved. And similarly, for the Guam Solid Waste Authority, we approved the first rate increase of that utility for the very first time, you know, since the beginning of the Guam Solid Waste Authority. This is the first rate increase that the authority received. I've also received bond issuance, procurement, contracts, awards, solar, and net metering issues, and a broad range of other matters. In the PUC meetings, I have asked that the utility managers justify the actions that they propose to, to take. If confirmed, I will do my best to conscientiously perform my duties and responsibilities as Commissioner. I understand that it is your role as Senators to exercise, advise, and consent regarding my reappointment. I'm here to answer any questions you may have, and I hope that after this hearing, you will give your consent and confirm my reappointment. I look forward to the opportunity to serve our island. Thank you, Anse Juus Maasi.
Thank you very much, Senator, Senator Brooks. I, I think by the non-presence of the, the, my, my colleagues here is just an indication that you're a slam dunk. That, that being said, as the Oversight Chair, of course, for, for utilities, of all utilities, telecoms and, and all this, a couple, a few questions. But the other thing I'd just say, yes, we try to get our appointees heard as soon as possible. The unfortunate thing at this point is I won't be able to get your, your confirmation for a, a session vote until January. Yeah, after the holidays, so January, and so.
That's fine.
Yeah, got it.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, yeah. Okay, again, the telecom companies, DOCOMO, GTA, PDI, rely on, of course, federal universal service funds, right, for fiber and 5G build-outs. How would you ensure that these certifications deliver tangible benefits to the Guam ratepayers?
Each year, we renew their license, and in fact, we just did that for the, the telecoms. And they go through a procedure of review by our, the assigned administrative law judge, and, and they also certify or testify that they have complied with certain, whatever the mandates are, and they indicate, for example, in the testimony, what they plan to do with the funds that they do get, and, for example, you know, regarding power outages or lines that are down, they indicate what may be the transmission, I mean, the reason for the outages. And what we're seeing in some new ones is that there is plans for further upgrade to the system, you know, and of course, our Chairman here is the one who signs the certification that they met X, Y, and Z, and that we do recommend that their license continue on Guam. So, that's the procedure there.
Okay. GFWA, they have a three, the three-year financial plan includes residential and commercial rate hikes, right? Okay. How would you balance the infrastructure funding with affordability for households?
Well, in all of our plans, whether it be water or power, okay, there is what we would call a lifeline rate, and we look at that lifeline rate to determine that affordability factor. I don't have the details of it, but that's always one of the first areas that we do look at, is, is that area, you know, and that's the way people at the lower end of the income scale get, how should I say, relief from the regular power rates, you know. I'll give you an example. I was really surprised that this month, my power bill was less than $200, you know. Of course, I'm just a household of one and my dog, but it was still less, you know, about $180 or so. For a typical family of four, and I know our, our Commissioner, Joe McDonald, is always talking, asking questions regarding how will this affect our life, our lifeline rate, because that's the only area that I'm aware of that gives relief to the, that level of taxpayers. Then the rest, of course, is, you know, like, I watched my power, my water bill continue to go up, you know, now it's averaging about $80 a month. I don't know, though, what is the lifeline rate for people, you know, but that, that is an area, and the challenge that we in the Commission face is affordability rates versus the money that the utilities need to continue to build their infrastructure. For example, GWA has about a half a billion-dollar plan, of which line replacement is, is one of them, you know. So, you know, that's the balancing act we at the Commission have to face, giving rate increases to ensure that the systems can be upgraded, but yet can the people of Guam afford it?
You know, as we continue to have oversight hearings on waterworks, public health, EPA as well, on the situation with Dildren, okay?
Yes.
And so, there's no secret that there is a legal threat, okay, on the horizon for the, of course, Dildren issue in, in GWA and whatever other agency may be deemed responsible. The PUC recently created regulatory assets for extraordinary litigation costs, right? How would you evaluate when such costs should be excluded from taxpayer obligations?
Well, when we created that regulatory asset, what, that was in particular because of the Core Tech litigation that's been ongoing, millions of dollars have already been spent. What that means is, rather than hitting the profit and loss statement right away, the money is accumulated and amortized over, I think, three to five years over the period so that all those costs don't hit right away. And of course, they're viewed by bond counsel as extraordinary items, not in the normal course of, of, of business. And for example, one of the things that we're trying to establish for GWA is a fund, to build up a fund so that they can have monies to meet extraordinary items like litigation, like Dildren, you know, so we're slowly building that up, and we, you know, because we've already done that, for example, for GPA. GPA has a fund now that's close to $20 million, you know, to help deal with extraordinary items, and it won't cost additional ratepayer increase. And so, that's the thing that the Chairman at our last, you know, when we approved the five-year rate plan, that we wanted to start to give them the opportunity to build up that reserve so that they can deal with extraordinary items like Dildren.
Yeah, yeah, actually, in today's paper, you were quoted as well, and you're asking questions regarding the, the rate increases and all that, so go down the line, and based on, on that, GPA also awarded a $6 million security services contract to protect, of course, critical infrastructure, okay? How would you weigh the necessity for such expenditures, again, against customer rates?
I'm sorry, Senator, GPA awarded.
The $6 million security services contract? To, for the protect, for the protection of critical infrastructure?
Oh, we just recently. I mean, G4S.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay, G4S.
And so, again, how would you weigh the necessity for having such against, of course, customer rates?
Well, there have, you know, I think copper wire is probably the one that is most always people are after, and, yes, that is an expense. There was a recent incident that happened not too long ago. I'm an umco, so I can't remember now all the details, I have to apologize. But where, where not for the fact that G4S was there, you know, the situation could have been worse, I think, wasn't it where a car or came and, and?
I don't recall that one.
Okay, anyway, yes, you, there are pros and cons in whether or not there should be security. The one thing that, the one question I do recall asking was, is it cheaper to do this in-house or outsourced? And, and GPA said, oh, definitely, it's cheaper outsourcing that, that particular service, you know, security services. So, it is 24/7. Maybe at the next public hearing, you can ask them for more details, but I do remember us going over that contract, and in the end, we, it was supported by justification, and our administrative law judge then said, yes, we should approve it. I'll give you another example. Insurance, that has skyrocketed, yeah, you know, that's a cost, you know, that, you know, fortunately, you know, when Cabris went out, GPA was reimbursed, and I think there was a recent case, or they had a cybersecurity attack, right? Yeah, and I, yeah, yeah, and, and.
Did they get reimbursed on that one?
Yeah, okay, but a claim has been put in to get reimbursed on that with insurance. So, cybersecurity insurance also is another cost that's going to hit us more and more.
Tried to delay that as much as possible, right?
I'm sorry.
We tried to delay that as much as possible, right?
Yes, yes, yeah.
Yeah, thank you. The other thing, given your, of course, your long history in public accountability, what specific weaknesses or systematic issues do you believe exist today within our utilities' financial or operational oversight, and how will you confront them as a Commissioner, and again, continuing Commissioner?
From a historical point of view, I think both utilities have done a good job. At one point, GWA was actually even on the low-risk audit status for a few years, okay? I think going forward, what is on the horizon, of course, like, for GPA, is the base rate increase that they're proposing for the new Okudu plant. Now, unfortunately, I may not be here for, for that thing, but the challenge I see with the base rate increase, you know, once you have a base rate, it's forever, you know, and what I plan to propose to the Commission is make, you know, we need the base rate in order to pay for Okudu. And, and at the hearing, that was a 25-year mortgage, so to speak, okay? So, rather than just make the base rate permanent, you know, why not do the base rate just for the 25 years and then look at it afterwards if they still need it? Because in the intervening time, there are going to be other bond issues that will be retired, and then that money can be used for capital improvements to protect, you know, to improve and maintain the, the system. So, so, from a financial, going back to your question, from a financial accountability issue, that's, you know, with GPA, I will say this on the record, I feel more comfortable with GPA's infrastructure outlook with Okudu, because one of the questions I asked at the hearing was, when are you then planning to have another Okudu or another, you know, to replace Cabris, you know, because Cabris is what's going to be replaced, and I can remember back in the 70s when Cabris first came in, and now, 50 years later, it's going to be replaced. And what John said was that they don't plan to, because by 2030, they will be more than 50% reliant on solar.
Renewables, yeah.
Yeah. The issue of solar is batteries, batteries that will, you know, during the peak time, during the day when solar is most active, how to preserve and reserve that energy for peak time, and peak time is in the evening when solar is not available. So, from that perspective, that's why I'm thinking, hopefully, with the base rate increase that GPA, and, you know, I don't want to talk more because I don't have all the information, but if it's primarily to pay for Okudu, then why not? but if it's primarily to pay for Okudu, then why not tie the base rate to the term of the mortgage of Okudu?
Sure, yeah. And let me, yeah, yeah, expand on what you're saying as well, because of course, we're entering a new era, of course, of major utility transformation. You know, by 2030, of course, the renewables, right? New generation projects, bond financing, of course, renewable energy mandates, and of course, the aging infrastructure you just had mentioned, right? What is the single greatest risk you see in our utilities' long-term plans, and how would you hold them accountable for addressing as such?
Well, I've already spoke to GPA. Let me speak to GWA, okay? With the recent bond financing, one of the things that I saw, you know, is water loss. When is that going to be resolved, okay? And, you know, we've been talking about water loss ever since ever, you know, since GWA was PUG, water loss has been in there. And that's one of the issues we continue to bring up. And what I saw, and what I asked Miguel at the last issue, I said, you know, in the bond perspective, the next 10 years do not show a decline in the water loss that GW has. And the reason for that is because until all of the pipes are replaced, you know, and upgraded, okay? Because every, it's kind of like whack-a-mo. You do a leak here, another one pops up in another area. And so to replace all those pipes, we're talking many, many years and hundreds of millions of dollars. I did ask at the last meeting, how many pipes, how many miles of pipes have you replaced? And how, you know, and what is your, you know, plan of action? How many are you going to replace this year, over the next several years? So we can see that, because unfortunately, according to that bond perspective, for the next 10 years, we don't see a reduction in the water loss area. It's still around approximately 50%. So to answer your overall question, what I see is the biggest challenge is continued infrastructure improvements, you know? And I think cybersecurity is also going to be a major challenge for all of the utilities, not just GPA and GWA, but, you know, Guam Solid Waste, because they had an incident, you know, where they inadvertently paid out over $200,000 to the wrong vendor. So cybersecurity is going to be the challenge for all of the utilities, including like telephone, that whole area, because we are now in a technological world. And what I don't know yet, you know, because it's still an evolving issue, is the role artificial intelligence is going to pay. How can it improve productivity and so on? You know, because that's still an evolving area.
Let me ask you this, Senators, is this, they talked about, of course, bond financing and down the line, I mean, I think GPA is looking at bond financing as well, and also retiring bonds, right? But likewise, you know, as the chair of tourism and aviation as well, you know, we haven't turned the corner, you know? As a matter of fact--
Oh, yeah.
Our projected tourism numbers are not what we expected it was going to be at this point. We're far from that at this point. We have closures, of course, Hard Rock, Duty Free had already announced they're out of here by the 30th of March, you know? So that being said, of course, our economic base, we're losing a lot of our folks, our folks are leaving for greener pastures, right? So how would you ensure that bond financing decisions, again, are transparent and not excessive relative to our economic base? You know, I mean, down the line, we're going to need to upgrade, right? But how do we balance that if we haven't turned that corner? And I'm hoping that we do stop this hemorrhaging of our folks leaving island and all that, and that our tourism base comes back as well, you know? And so how would you balance that with, you know, the need for infrastructure enhancement and the cost, and maybe the dwindling numbers that we have of users here?
Yeah, well, let me give you an recent example of the GWA bond financing, because the first time, a few years ago, when GWA went out for bond financing, they had capitalized interest. And I've always found capitalized interest anathema, all right? But they gave a song and dance about it, and I'll be honest with you, Senator, bond financing has always been a little bit of a struggle for me, okay? You know, at this recent bond financing that they went out for, what, $225 million or so, they, there was no capitalized interest, and the financial consultant said, which reconfirmed my belief, that capitalized interest is much more costly. So that's a big improvement for GWA with this recent bond financing, that they did not have to have capitalized interest. And recently, you know, the legislature had authorized financing up to $300 million. So we, at the last meeting, we recently approved a $75 million bank or bank financing, you like, what are you, what's the term that I want to use, revolving financing, so that they can finance projects short-term before they go out and use bond financing. So that's going to help them. But let me go back and tell you, you know, going back to the concern, because I have been surprised at what has happened to Guam also from a cost of living perspective. The silver lining that we have compared to the rest of Micronesia is the federal government, the military. That has been a significant help for us. And during the pandemic, okay, during the pandemic, when, you know, tourism, you know, dropped off the face of the earth here on Guam, the military was there. And that's why you didn't see a lot of the hotel people really screaming, because, you know, at any point in time, over several thousand military were occupying the hotels at that time. And so that was a quiet thing, you know? We focused primarily just on natural tourism, but the tourism that we have is the military. And, you know, if it wasn't for Uncle Sam, and let me just tell you, with the Marines finally coming sometime in '26 and '27, the silver lining that we have is the Section 30 monies that the Marines are going to build, bring. Because I can remember when I was public auditor and I looked at the Section 30 money that would come, my eyeballs just was, wow, that's a lot of money, okay? That's a lot of money. Another thing that is eventually going to help our government of Guam, okay, is, I believe it's in 2030, and I could be wrong, you might want to ask Paula Blas about this, the unfunded liability of the retirement fund will finally be paid off. You know, we're paying, on average, 27% of every dollar. That was the last time I checked, I don't remember now if it's higher or lower. And that's going to drop down to 5% or so by 2030. And, you know, that's not too far away from here, you know, that was, you know, 10, 15, you know, when are we going to amortize? You know, when you're a Namco like me, all those things are coming out now. So that's going to also help our government, okay, from a cost perspective, okay? But a year or two ago, I was at a conference where Dr. Jones spoke, and I had not been fully aware, okay? She really opened my eyes about what was happening on Guam as far as Micronesia. Despite whatever people say, the Micronesians have been a very integral part of Guam's labor force, okay? What happened during the pandemic, when everybody received all the monies, you know, people were getting 15, 20, $30,000 checks, they left Guam. They left Guam, and the Micronesians also left Guam. Why? Because unfortunately, our housing, and I don't have an answer to that area, and I know that's not part of, under your committee, but this is where, to answer your overall broad question. Housing has become so unaffordable for our people here on Guam. I was really quite pleased, you know, like, my sister, we have a house in Inarahan, and we put it out, we were, you know, renting, because we thought with Inarahan, you know, being so far, we're not going to get people to, you know? So we only listed it for $1,200 a month, and several people said, wow, that's affordable for the local people, $1,200 a month for a two-bedroom area. And we got at least three or four railtors who wanted, you know, but we already had committed. So going back to your question, it's affordability, it's affordability. And one area I can say, with Okudu, you know, the base rate increase is going to be offset by the decline in the LiAC. So at least power will be more affordable. I can't speak, you know, about water, because, you know, 30 years of neglect is now coming to haunt us. And that's why GWA needs these rate increases so that they can upgrade their pipes and replace that, so that we can stop this hemorrhaging of 50% water loss by GWA.
You know, I think you would appreciate this as well, as the chair of Customs and Quarantine as well. I'd just send a couple of my staff and one of the other senators to Palau to be schooled on their implementation of the harmonized system, the harmonized system, their collections--
Oh, yes.
--for cargo and quarantine, okay? And so they'll be coming here, and I've got some, I've got some bills that, one of them they introduced yesterday, and I think you'll appreciate this, because Palau, I mean, everyone has implemented this except for us--
Except for Guam, yes.
Yes, yes. And Palau, in their first quarter of implementation, their revenues jumped 21%.
You know, Guam is, should be the leader in areas like this.
Unfortunately, we're not.
You can put all the economies together of Palau, FSM, and the Marshall Islands, and Guam will be, you know, still twice as big as them. But customs, yeah. We did an audit about that. We did an audit, and we asked for a couple of, and they had to go boxes in the warehouse, and finally, they couldn't find it. They couldn't find it. And, you know, we're talking, we're talking billion dollars, not millions like in the islands, but billions of dollars, and we can't even track it.
Absolutely, absolutely. So I would hope that, because we'll be having that public hearing, I hope you have come and testify as well regarding that. What bill number is that, guys? 285, right?
Well--
238, Bill 238. It was introduced yesterday.
Have your staff send me a reminder--
We'll send that to you.
Because I remember the audit we did. Everything is manual, everything is manual. I can give a personal example of something that happened to me and that was really surprised me. So I'm still waiting for Customs to come and copla me for something, okay? But I doubt if they will.
See, I knew I would get you excited about this. I knew you're a numbers person, and again, yes, the audit came out, I think we're under collecting 100 million, something like that?
Oh, yes, I mean--
Under collection, yeah.
Not only that, but from an economic point of view, to just, what kind of goods are we bringing, are we, you know, agriculture versus, you know--
It's not trackable, it's not trackable, yeah, absolutely. And you know, this whole thing, this is all funded by the United Nations, this is not, no local funding with this, yeah? And so we're glad, and so Palau, we went down there to see the implementation, and they'll be coming out here as well to help us implement that program. So we're very excited about that, that bill would just pass a long ago, but we have other supporting bills, again, to support its enactment here in Guam. So thank you for that. You know, I got no other questions for you, Senator? I mean, unless you have any questions for me, I'm good.
Well, thank you for giving me a heads up that you'll report my nomination out in January, and I hope it will be favorable, and I--
I'm sure it'd be very favorable.
What the staff was telling me, that you usually attend the CCU meetings--
Yes, actually, if I'm not there, my staff is always there. We attend all the committee meetings that I chair. If I don't, if I'm not personally there--
I have yet to see you come to the PUC.
No, I wasn't the last PUC, or the, yeah, the meeting, I'm sorry.
The public hearing, but our board meeting, but I invite you to please--
When the notice comes to me, I know we go in there, if I don't get the notice, then I don't know the meeting's happening, so anyway, but I wasn't dead at all. When was that, last week, right? That was last week, yeah.
Our meeting's the last Thursday of the month. I'll make sure the staff send you a reminder--
Yeah, you let us know, and if I'm not there--
Because the PUC is under you.
We'll definitely be there, and if we're not there, and if you're on Zoom, we Zoom as well with that. But with that being said, unless you have any other questions for me, we close up for this. Again, thank you again, it's an honor again to welcome you today. Thank you very much. And this concludes, of course, this appointment nomination, of course, to, for Mrs. Brooks, former senator. My committee will continue to accept written testimony for the next five business days. Testimonies can be addressed to Senator Jesse Luan, chairman, and mailed to 163 Chalan Santo Papa, Hagan Yagwam 96910, or submitted via email to senator.luan@guamlegislature.gov. Be no further business, this confirmation hearing is now adjourned. It is now exactly 2:45 PM. Thank you very much, and happy Thanksgiving.
Thank you, and a good Christmas.
And Merry Christmas as well, if I don't see you, because your nomination, I mean, you won't be up for a vote until January, so again, happy Thanksgiving and Merry Christmas, everybody. Thank you, thank you, thank you.